Hello, good evening everyone. Good evening. It looks like we have a full house despite the incoming rain. So we appreciate you all being here this evening for our Growth and Planning Committee meeting. I'd like to start off by handing the mic over to our superintendent, Dr. Jeanette Ball for some opening words.
Thank you all for being here and just wanted to let everybody know that there are still chairs up here. There's at least eight of them, another over here, some spread out there. So anywhere would you all like to sit? And that one is probably available and there's another one there. So plenty of chairs and snacks. So thank you all very much. And I'll go ahead and get started and say thank you. Lots of familiar faces. So that means that you have been with us through the entire process. So thank you all very much for that. But I want to take a few minutes first to talk about something from last, I was gonna say last weeks, but I think it's what, last, at least two weeks, almost a month. Almost a month. Most of the time when I speak, I speak very passionately, especially about things that I'm very passionate about. This committee has been something that I'm very passionate about because it means a lot to me. And last month when we met and we were starting to talk about the track, I got really passionate about that. And one of my comments or statements that I made probably was not taken in the way that I meant it. And I wanted to apologize for that. My comment was truly made in an effort to try to demonstrate that we need to be equitable with all our facilities regardless of where the campuses are at. And that's truly what I meant for my camp, for, from my statement. So then what happened was I did immediately hear that my statement was not taken in that manner. And in order to try to de-escalate and not make things worse, I removed the video from this meeting from YouTube. So that was probably not the right thing for me to do because I did make that statement. I own that statement. But though the way I meant for that statement to be was not the way it was taken. So I want to apologize for that and let you know that the video in its entirety is on YouTube with my statement. I'm not trying to hide anything or I certainly don't want to create mistrust because that was certainly not my intentions. But I wanted to let you all know that the video there in its entirety is up. And I value the work that you're doing with us and for us to help us create equitable facilities for the entire district regardless of which campus you are at and where your child goes to school. So thank you all again for being here, for being part of this committee because I do believe that the work that we're doing is very important for our district. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any questions regarding my comments before we start the meeting. Okay, well then we will go and get started. I want to thank Nicole, Dr. Taganoff, because she has facilitated all these meetings. It certainly has not been a one-person show. I know she's gotten lots of help from Helen Keaton, from Lacy Gosh, from lots of individuals. But thanking the team for all the work that we've done, continue to do, and still look forward to doing. And please continue with this because we appreciate you being here very much. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ball. So we are going to go ahead and get started with our meeting. We are going to pass out the handout for tonight's meeting. In addition, it will be posted to our website for you to reference at a later time. But those handouts are coming around as we speak. You should be able to stick them in your binder as with all of the other handouts. If you missed any of our previous meetings, we do have some additional handouts from our previous meetings that you can take by the sign-in table and put them in your binder as well. So we've got a lot to cover in this meeting. And hopefully we will get some input for you and recommendations from you that we can then present to our board. But we do have our agenda. We're going to go over our last meeting, our Meeting 3 summary, just as we do for every meeting. We'll do a quick recap. We'll talk about some timeline options next. And then we'll take just a brief moment to talk about some lessons learned and then talk about master planning for our future. And we'll share some preliminary data that we've gathered from our elementary campuses. And then we'll wrap up and hopefully get you home before all the rain comes down. Okay? All right. So let's get started. Let's go back and talk a little bit about our last meeting. Now, not everyone was able to be here when we had our presenter speak on our demographic update. It was a very thorough presentation with a lot of information to really digest. And so I wanted to come back to this meeting and just highlight a couple of the things that he spoke about. If you were able to view the meeting, you can see the whole demographic report took up all of the time. And there was really a lot of robust Q and A that happened afterwards. But I do want to go ahead and just give a brief summary of what those main things were that we're probably going to need to keep in our pocket as we continue to do the work and move the work forward in being able to prioritize the needs for our district. So one of the things that was highlighted in the demographic report is that Judson ISD ranked third in total new home closings among all greater San Antonio school districts. That's a really big deal for us because with new homes is new families and the projection of new students that could enter our district. So we are a fast-growing district, which is really great for us. So this is key information for us to consider and keep in mind. There was also some slides that highlighted specifically elementary, middle, and high school growth. You can see on this slide the number of, or the percent, I'm sorry, the number of annual starts and closings in some specific elementary campus areas. Escondido being the top for starts and closings. Worthy Oaks, Masters, and Spring Meadows are our top four. And so when we start to think about where we are and how we're growing, those are the areas of our district that are rising to the top of new homes, homes being sold, and a lot of growth. Now, that does not mean that some of our other campuses we need to keep an eye of, but those are some of the top ones that are rising up there. For middle school, our top two are the Metzger community and the Kitty Hawk community. And so we can see that we've got 70% of the district's new occupied homes in these areas here. And then just wanted to bring back a highlight also of the high schools. Wagner being top, that is over there by the Masters area as well. We have veterans that are having some annual closings and Judson ranking down third. This was a slide that I thought was important to bring back because it brought out a lot of discussion in our last meeting. And this was students coming into our district, flowing in, and students leaving our district. So our demographer showed this slide and we talked a lot about, okay, how many kids are transferring in and transferring out of Judson. So I want to just point out the year 2020 and 2021, where we had about 4,800 students transferring out and about 288 students transferring in. During our last meeting, we had a lot of really great discussion about, well, where are these kids going? Can we really track specifically? Are they charter schools? Are they other districts? What can we do to find that information? And on top of that information that we, or the discussion that we had, there were a lot of questions surrounding, well, what can we do to recapture some of these students? And so I want to show you a little bit of data. I know that if you have attended some of our Listen and Learn tours, the Office of Innovation has secured a partnership and a grant through the Systems of Great Schools. And Ms. Davis in another meeting shared some really important data that they were able to pull and show us exactly where our kids are going or coming from. So this slide highlights how many kids are we getting from other surrounding districts? So that you could see we've got, out of that 288 in the 2020-21 school year, we captured about 116 kids from Northeast, about 52 from Shertz-Sibyllo, a few from East Central, San Antonio ISD, and then Northside ISD. So we do have some students flowing into our district from some of the other districts. But I think the slide that is more important that you wanted to see is this one of where our kids are going. So you can truly see a clearer picture of where the students are going. Are they just going to charters? Are they other districts and so forth? So I'm just going to give you a few minutes to look at this. But I also wanted to point out that there is a district on here, Hallsville ISD, where we're losing about 100-plus students. It's a military district. So there's a lot of military bases that surround that particular district. And so there's reasonings, I think, behind some of why students are, or large number of students are going to other districts. So just take a minute to glance at this information. And then I want us to do a little activity, just a pair-share activity at your table. All right. So a lot of the conversation around the original demographic slide was how can we recapture some of these kids? So a part of this conversation that we want to have with you is, what are your ideas to recapture some of our kids? We're looking at more marketing campaigns, of course, offering specialized programs in our schools. But what else could we do to recapture some of our kids that are leaving? So just a few minutes at your table to have that discussion and then we're going to share out. Okay? One, two, three, go. I'll give you about a minute to wrap up your last little thought, or not little thought, your last thought. Okay. So let's bring it back together. And I'd love to hear just some thoughts from your table discussion about the inflow or outflow of our students as they were once ours and then when they left the district, they did move to another one. Okay, any thoughts?
What does Idea Schools offer that Judson ISD doesn't offer?
So one of the questions in their discussion is, what is it that Idea is offering to their students that we are not offering to our students? Anybody have any insights that they want to share about that? I think it's a discussion, sure. Could be smaller classroom sizes at those schools. Definitely something to look into. What is attracting a family to move over to those school districts or charters than staying? Any other thoughts or questions that we need to consider and ponder?
I do think there's a misconception that parents have with the Schools Like Idea where they think it's a specialized program where it really is only smaller class sizes, which I think that would draw people back into Judson just from talking to parents who have gone to Idea or Great Hearts or other places. They think it's a specialized program and some of it, they do offer different things. But then they end up coming back because they then realize they've been miscommunicated with that they don't offer what they do. So I think smaller class sizes, like the gentleman said, would be beneficial.
Great, thank you for that. And quite possibly, we may get some students that come back explaining some of those maybe misconceptions of that. But definitely if smaller class sizes is something that is attracting those students there, it's definitely worth a consideration when we are moving forward with our master plan and how it is that we can accomplish that.
We came up with a few. One is safety in our classrooms, hallways, and discipline in the classes. I don't know how many of y'all have actually witnessed one of these classes. Yeah, these kids, you can't even hear the teachers trying to teach the kids because they're just crazy. That would, that's a big deterrent. If you go on the website, you'll see that that's one of the things parents are usually complaining about. I think we need more vocational opportunities for these kids to really walk out with the career possibility, certifications and scholarships availabilities. And we need the counselors at our schools to start working with our kids as sophomores and juniors, not waiting till they're seniors. It's way too late to get them for the programs. We have some amazing programs because it's what our kids don't know in time. And they have to have all that stuff done by sophomore year or they miss out. And our counselors have to get in there and get these to our kids and us as parents, as freshmen and sophomores, so our kids can walk out as a diesel, you know, all these different things that the kids could have had if we knew they, so that's our idea.
Great, thank you. So I heard safety and security, opportunities for vocational pathways, and also starting sooner rather than waiting until high school.
I just want to piggyback on that and say I think that starting sooner, not even sophomore year in high school, but like way down here at the elementary level, we're ready. But we need help from the district with marketing that information to families so that they know what's available so that we can help support the kids in plugging them into the place that they belong.
And I love what you said about plugging them into a place where they belong. Because I think that in our quest for providing equitable opportunities for students, we focus a lot definitely on academics, definitely on vocation. But we also need to really consider where is it that the student belongs? Where is it that they're feeling a connection with the school? That we need to figure out the most innovative way. We need to figure out what student makes you feel connected and make sure that that's offered to the student and they're not feeling like, well, I don't really belong here, so maybe I just won't join something. We need to be able to get that information to make sure that we can plug every single student in a place that they belong. So this is the work that we're working towards in these meetings, in our Listen and Learn meetings to make sure that the need that is needed, not just what we want or what we aspire to do, but where is the need to ensure that all of our students have a connection? And so I love that point. On that, I'm going to move us forward. And I know this is recorded, so I have all the notes that I'll write down to make sure that we address in future meetings. Just wanted to go over a couple more slides from the demographic report, mostly because it was a lot of information to digest. And I'm sure a lot of you left, if you attended, just trying to figure out, well, where do we go from here? What do we even do with all of this information? But I wanted to just highlight some projected growth models based on the information that we received in the demographic report. And look at it in comparison to the capacities that we have on each campus. And when you look at that, we're looking at these schools, where's my light? These schools going into exceeding capacity based on the projected growth. We can see Worthy Oaks way up top, Pacheco, Masters, which has one of the higher growth rates, Escondido and Spring Meadows, all above that 100% capacity if our projected growth stays on path. Here we are with middle school. I don't think anybody's surprised that Kitty Hawk's up there at the top. And then of course, as aligned with some of the information we saw on the other slides, we've got Metzger down there as well. And then we have a slide for campus capacity for our high schools as well. So that was just a very, very small scratch at the demographic report that we were able to hear the presentation on in our last meeting. But I wanted to make sure to bring that information back to connect it to the things that we're going to talk about next. So I know that everybody has been asking about a timeline, right? When are we going to go for another bond? Are we going to go for another bond? And so one of the things about this committee is that it serves as an advisory committee to the board. We do have some board members here. Mr. Rafa Diaz and our board president, Ms. Jennifer Rodriguez, is here as members of the board. And I'm glad that they're here to kind of talk about some of the timeline options that we are thinking about. Because even though the bond didn't pass, there's still the need. And we can see that with the demographic report. We can see that with some of the internal assessments that we're already looking at that information and data. And we're going to share a little bit of that with you all today. But we need to figure out what type of a timeline, when would it be realistic to actually call for another bond? So we have a couple of options, but we wanted to get a little bit of feedback from this committee who's been with us every single meeting, doing the work and thinking about all of the data that we've presented to see what would your recommendation be? Or where would you be leaning towards as far as if we were going to call another bond? When might that be more realistic? So we call a bond in either November or May, or November or May. So our options are November, May, November, May. And so if you look at the slides, these are just very general timelines of what it is that we would have to do to be able to get to a bond election. And so if we called our bond in, for the November election, this is, this is the timeline that we would have to do things. Very, 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 very high-level timeline. This is definitely not all of the things that we would need to do. But you could see that from May to June, we would continue with our Growth and Planning meetings. We would really try to hit hard on finalizing external assessments, prioritizing needs. We would need to develop our bond propositions and prioritize definitely what those are going to include. We would then have a deadline, an official deadline to call for a bond and to get that information out there. And then it goes into our bond campaign. And all that goes into that, including determining early voting locations. How are we going to market this bond? How are we going to get through the broader community and all of our community within? And then of course, we end with that bond election. So we have the three options. We have of course, November 2022. Some things to consider would be it is an election for our Texas state governors. We also know that the ballot language used when people are going out for bond is still very new. So we would have to do a better job, of course, of explaining that in graphics and information. Other things to consider is of course, time to prepare. It's a short timeline. And so if we go on to our next option, which would be May of 2023, same setup of our overview of when we would get to a bond election. But we would definitely have our external assessments completed to be able to prioritize our bond propositions and our packages. We would then have a deadline to call the bond and then we would have our campaign in February through April. And then that election would be in May. And then our third option could be November 2023. And then you can see that we would continue our work here. We would look at bond propositions. We would establish our political action committee. And then we would go forth with the rest of the things. So the task or the activity or the thought process that I want you to kind of go through is we want to take a recommendation from this committee to the board on where is this committee feeling confident that we should call a bond? But we have to think about some considerations, right? A lot of different considerations. Tax, just what you're feeling in your community, the needs at your campus. There's lots of things to consider on each of those options. So you have them in front of you. There are clusters of those same options kind of spread out around the library. I'd love for you to have some conversations at your table. And there's some sticky notes. And maybe write down a pro or con for each option and put them on the corresponding posters. Does that make sense? That way we can have a more comprehensive considerations list so that we could really decide where we're leaning towards, what would make the most sense based on the information that you've received. And then we're going to pass out dots after that so that you could vote on which option you are leaning towards. And this will give us a better idea of where the committee thinks we are as far as the work goes. Okay? Yes, you can have a conversation. You are going to write down a pro and con on sticky notes. There are clusters of these options around the library that you can stick them on. When you are ready to vote on an option, I've got dots. Ms. DeLeon has dots. And I have some too. So I'll set the timer for about four minutes. What's important here is to hear your considerations on why you're leaning towards or against a specific option. Okay, so remember that in addition to writing some pros and cons for us to consider, we also need you to vote on an option that you feel more supportive with. And so Ms. DeLeon has dots that we could put on each option, and then we're going to compile all of our pros and cons, so we have a comprehensive list of consideration. Okay, about one more minute, one more minute. Please make sure to get a dot from Ms. DeLeon, or I have some too, so that you can vote on the option that you feel strongly supportive with in. It's just the option, you just put a dot on the option that you like the best. Okay. So I see some dots, I see some sticky notes. That is great. We will take that information, we will compile it, we will add it to our list of considerations, and then we will have a majority option that this particular committee can support. So I'm going to go ahead and move forward. Ms. Keaton does have a lot of really great information that she's going to share next, but right before I hand over the mic to her, I just want to go back for a minute, because I do know there are people in this room that were part of the Growth and Planning Committee that did a lot of really, really great work in the previous year to set up our proposals. And so I want to make sure that I recognize that work that they did, but also recognize some of the lessons learned from the previous bond. And we did go back and reflect. We did have a lot of conversations with different groups and stakeholders, some with our administrators, teachers, students even had a lot to say about why they thought our bond did not pass. But I wanted to just highlight a couple of things of lessons learned so that you are confident that moving forward, we have reflected on some of those things, and there are still a lot of things we need to learn and get better at. But I think some of the important things that we want to mention as far as lessons learned is that we admittedly did not reach out to our broader community. We targeted our Judson community the most, and I think that with that new ballot language and just making sure that we got buy-in from our taxpayers and constituents, we did not do, or we could have done a better job reaching out to that broader community. So when we talk about, we want to make sure that all of our kids belong and feel connected somewhere, we want that same thing for our taxpayers and all of our constituents, that even if you don't have a stake or a student that actually attends our school, what we do with your money matters, your voice also matters, and I think that that's an important reflection to have and to make sure that we are able to have a strategic plan in reaching that community as we move forward. A lot of things on making sure that we get more exposure. I know one of the groups mentioned, you know, we need the help of the district to promote all of the really great programs that we have. And I think that in this, in when we go for another bond, that we need to strategically place resources in that marketing piece to promote it a little bit better. We know that we want to establish and start our political action committee a little bit sooner. And we also needed to make sure that we had comprehensive stakeholder feedback. We did have stakeholder feedback, but when we did our reflections, there was a sentiment that we didn't have it from all of our groups. And I think that moving forward, we've already started to establish some of those committees to get that information, like Dr. Ball's Student Committee, she also has her ESOP Committee. So we're really trying to make sure that whatever it is and whatever data we look at and whatever it is that we use to prioritize what becomes in our propositions and in our packages reflects the needs that are being seen from our stakeholders and communities, and that all of those also align with our internal assessments and our professional external assessments, because that way, all of that data aligned will help us to prioritize and put together packages that the community can hopefully stand behind. So just to recap, these are the top 20 recommendations from the Growth and Planning Committee from the prior year. We took the top 19 and put them in the propositions as we needed to by law, like we have to have a separate one for technology, have to have a separate one for athletics. And so that is the work that they did, and they did a lot of work like we're doing here, looking at a lot of data and prioritizing. And then these are just the ways that we presented that information in some of our meetings and to our community. So now we need to start thinking about, okay, we're at a point, how are we going to make this process better? How are we going to present information in a more comprehensive way? So remember that in our first meeting, we as a committee did a lot of work about what it is that is important to us. What are we going to base our decisions on when we start to prioritize and when we start to move the work forward? And so I'll always come back to these emerging priorities of equity, safety, appeal, academic diversity, there's that word, connectedness again, how do we belong, and accessibility. So Ms. Keaton's going to talk a little bit to you about this master planning process. And what we are trying to do is we are trying to pull together all of our assessments, our internal assessments, external assessments, stakeholder focus groups, just observational data. We're trying to pull together our planning and programming, some of the work you guys have already done. We did a hot dot activity about career, college, and military readiness, and what programs you thought were important to invest in. And then we still need to make sure that we are always encompassing an outreach and engagement in this particular process. Having a master plan makes sure that we include for every single campus, school growth, our demographics data, renovations for library, fine arts and STEM, outdoor learning, all of these components that in our emerging priorities, you all decided were important. So Helen's going to talk about our next steps for master planning. Ms. Keaton, our Executive Director of Facilities Planning.
Thank you, Nicole. So, you know, there's a lot of things, and I think I just moved this the wrong way. Sorry. So there's a lot of things that we have taken consideration to move through this process, and it really is a process. We have reached out, and of course, through Growth and Planning last year, and input from maintenance and our own facility staff, we did pull together a list, and that's the 19 things that you saw, right? But there's a lot of work behind the scenes that happens. And so I've been asked a lot of questions, how do you know? How do you know what we need? How do you know what facilities have? And so many of you have been involved, because we currently have third-party assessments going on, and so architects, engineers, building envelope consultants have been out at our campuses, right? And so what they're looking at is just things that need to be maybe just updated. We have some facilities that are really old, then we have some facilities that are new. And when you look at things across the district, we don't necessarily have the equity that I've heard so many people asking for. Why do they have that? Why do we not? And so that master planning process helps keep that alignment that you need. It's just not something that we currently have. So we got approval from the board, we've got input from principals and directors. Now we're getting input from all of the architects, engineers, they're looking at mechanical systems, they're looking at electrical systems, and they're going through our facilities holistically. They're looking at classroom sizes, just all these different factors. So I thought it would be important to really just kind of lead you through that, so when you got the data, you would have an understanding of what it takes just to get this data and how we can utilize it as a district moving forward, not only for immediate needs, but a master plan for every building that we have in the district moving forward. So the first thing that we do is a condition assessment, right? So they're going to go in, they look at the physical state of the facility. And as some of y'all know, some of our facilities are great, and we have others that show a lot of movement, so they might have structural issues going on. Some of them have a high amount of moisture, others less so. So we might have some building envelope, which is the exterior shell of the building that's been compromised in some way. So some facilities have a lot more humidity than others. It could be tied to mechanical system, whatever the case may be. So there's a lot of things that would create it, but they're also looking at maintenance that potentially needs to be done, that hasn't been. And so those are things they will look for as far as condition. Once we get that information, we use it to help us prioritize, right? We know instinctively what things need to be corrected quicker than others, so the condition assessments will help us do that. Then we have educational adequacy. So we, we talk about the buildings, all the things that need to be done and what's happening at the site, and all the things that are cracked, and this needs to be painted, and this carpet needs to be replaced. But another thing that's really, really important to think about is how we utilize the facility. And each campus is different. What they do within their four walls is different, right? So we look at the classroom size, we look at the lighting in the space. Like this space, for instance, we have great track lighting, we don't have dimming, so for some people, really, really hard to see what's going on up here, right? Our newer, newer facilities have it, older facilities don't have it. So these things will all come out on these assessments, and by the time we're done, we'll have thousands of pages of information to go and sort through. But they look at the data, what kind of technology do we have? Some buildings have great technology, others not so good. They look at core spaces, so core spaces could be used for career in technology, the libraries, what do we do inside the library? What do we want to do inside the library? So there's a lot of different things that we will be evaluating, and how does it change from facility to, from facility to facility? Capacity and utilization. So you've heard us talk about capacity at many of the meetings. So you've heard us talk about capacity at many of the meetings because capacity is really important. But there's different types of capacity. And so you have the building capacity, which is just a calculation that is done based on number of classrooms in a building and what your classroom ratio is. So that's an easy calculation to do. We've heard many of you say classroom sizes are too big. And then I've heard other people say classroom sizes, the classroom areas that we have are too small. So again, we will be evaluating that. I mean, we are drilling into every detail about the facilities that we have and how we're currently using them. We've had situations where we do have classrooms, but they've been converted by the principals to other spaces because there are spaces in the buildings that we're not designing for. And they need an office for something, so they convert a classroom. So this will all come out in these assessments. We will be able to see visually, and we did some of this internally, but it is great for us to have the external people who specialize in this, the architects and engineers, they do it every day for a lot of different school districts, to get their view. Sometimes we can be blinded, right? We live in the environment, so we don't necessarily see everything we need to see. So having them come in and do this behind our own internal people will be great information to use. Program capacity. So we look at the campus, what programs are there? What programs do we want to do? What facility do we have to support it, right? So we made a decision a few years ago, I guess, to do pre-K for everybody at the elementaries, right? Well, we don't have any toilets for pre-K kids, right? And believe me, they're pretty close to the floor. So part of what came out in our assessment is, it's great that we're doing pre-K, but we don't have the toilets to support what we're doing, right? Can be fixed. And so those are things that we're going to find out. So this information is going to help us look at things more globally because a lot of feedback that we got from principals and directors is the same exact information because y'all live there every day. You know what works about your facility, you know what doesn't work about your facility. I can walk in, I'm going to see one thing because my lens is completely different, right? So that's one of the things that we're going to find out. Just one more thing is we're going to find out what we don't have that we really need in the different facilities. So really excited about gathering all this data because it is going to tell us a lot of information. Another thing is educational specifications. This is not something that Judson currently has. And so it is hard for us to design a school or addition or any of our campuses currently because we don't have an educational specification. So an educational specification is actually you get with your curriculum, you get with your special ed. It helps you look at the spatial environment of where you are and what you're trying to do in the building. And then you know, this needs to be located next to this, cafeteria needs to be by the gym, we need people to be accessed, able to access the building from the outside for a special program, you know? And so you start looking at how to organize the building. And that's something we're going to develop because we don't currently have it. Which is why, when you look across our district, other than the four elementaries that are prototypes, all of our campuses are different. And it makes it, it makes it hard, especially when you think about it in terms of like maintenance. Every building they have is different. Yes, ma'am? We did, so what we did last time is an internal assessment. So what we did is we reached out to maintenance staff, we looked at some preliminary demographic information that had been done previously. Maintenance had already developed pretty much their list, they had prioritized things because they know when a chiller's going to go down. And those kind of things are a half a million dollars. So yes, some of that work was done. It was not done to this degree of specificity, absolutely not. And we need it. We need it. Because when you develop a master plan, you're taking this data, you're constantly updating it, and that's what's leading you to where you need to go, right? And so this is important stuff. Yeah, I'll just hit on this slide briefly, Nicole. So when we look at educational specs, there's kind of four categories. And so you look at the learning environment, you look at the physical environment, the qualities and features, and then of course the elements of the space. So yes, I did kind of get that. Thank you. So total project cost. Of course, everything that we want has a price tag and it is definitely something that when we start putting together any bond, we have to consider what can we afford, right? What can we have, what can we afford? So we do have to, yes, ma'am? So she asked on when we would be completely finished with the external assessments and have that information. So all the elementary schools, the external, internal and external assessments are complete. We are currently working on all the middle and high school assessments. And then we are also doing the same assessments for like ERC and transportation, child nutrition. We're going to do everything because that's our, it becomes our baseline, right? And then we can talk to you in a way that we've got the facts. So, oh, absolutely. So we are currently, in the next, next week, we'll have all the data in, the assessments have done, we're waiting on the report on the elementaries. So of course, that's 20 of our campuses right there. The middle school, high school, we should have two weeks from now and I don't have a calendar, it's the end of the first week of June. And then all the support buildings will be two weeks after that. So by the end of June, we will have the results of the external assessments on every facility that we have. Then we'll have to go, we'll have to take that data, go through and put together an executive summary, start breaking out those pieces so that we can present it to you. So that's kind of the timeline for it. Yes? So, repeat, okay. So his question is, will they, the results of the assessment, will they actually tell us we need to do A versus B? In other words, put a dimming system in or put a projector in? And they, they're not going to tell us specifically. So as a district, and you have to think about moving things forward, you can't stay where you are all the time. And with advances in technology, the amount of money it costs to just support technology, the manpower to support technology, we really need to think about what technology looks like down the road. And I know Lacey can speak more to the technology piece than I certainly can, but she's very forward-thinking. And so I don't know, Lacey, do you want to say a couple of things about what your thoughts are related to technology? Because I know.
So as far as the technology goes, we are having an external audit of all of the backend systems that will go along with all of the things that we are doing with the facilities and planning in terms of that type of, I guess, equipment and things that would be needed in order to upgrade and update the network. We know there are certain areas that we already know need to be replaced and corrected. The question is, in what order and will it provide us? And we're looking at it to provide us with a three-year, five-year, 10-year rotation plan so that we know we can get it on a cycle so that we can continue to maintain it after the fact. As far as classroom, like example here, I can tell you the reason, it really isn't the lights that's making that projector look that way, it's really the strength of the projector and it is just not a, the quality that would be needed for this type of space. And so those are some of the things that we would evaluate within the department here. We do a lot of, a lot of research in terms of like classroom setups. We are, and as Ms. Keaton said, I am specifically looking at what would create us as a model district in terms of the tools that our students are going to need in the future, what they are going to come in contact with when they are in the workforce, what they're going to come in contact with if they go to a college or university setting and so on. So those are the types of things. And we're starting to put some of those things in place now with some of the things that the board is providing to us. So we are putting out some model classrooms and trying to show what that would look like and start working with some of our teachers. So we will have that assessment towards the end of the month and it will coincide with what is going on with facilities and planning.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we will. Definitely. So just real quickly on project cost, we just wanted to hit on this a minute. So a lot of times when we look at project cost, people just think about the cost of the construction, right? And there are more pieces to that puzzle. So you do have the construction cost. We are, you know, seeing a lot of increases across the board. Y'all are seeing at home with your normal food and gas and everything else. But in addition to that, we have the soft cost, which is all the building permits, the architect, all those sorts of fees, we call those soft costs. Then you've got to think about furniture, all the fixtures, equipment that go into a school. You have to think about the technology. And then of course, we have to add contingencies for things that are unknown. So across the board, and this is just something to consider when we start talking about when we would call another bond, is prices are going up and they're not going to be the same as they were last November. So even if we come up with something that's similar to what we put out before, it's going to cost more money, right? And so I just think it's important to keep in your mind because it will affect what we can have. So what you're seeing here, and this is what we will also develop, so you've got all the assessment information that we're going to have, lots and lots of data. But another thing that is really important to look at moving forward is the master plan for each campus facility that we own, right? And so this is just a sample here of a facility. And so what we will have moving forward is we will have the campus plan. That campus plan will have all the buildings on the campus, it will have information about when they were built, it will have information on when the last renovations were done, if any. Some of ours truly, everything is original to the date it was built. And so we can use this moving forward as education changes, as buildings get older, then we can calculate. We may rebuild an entire campus, for instance. So you may tear one building down, you may put a field there, then tear the next building down and you move through as a process, right? But it's all part of a master plan. So we need to look at the district again holistically, what do we have? How can we utilize it? And what are we going to do moving forward? So we will have this on every campus. And then this is just a sample of what I was talking about. You know, what is the top priority? What bubbles to the top? What do we have to deal with first? And then update these master plans so that we have them moving forward. And this is also a piece that we do not currently have. So we're developing those as well and they will be ready by the end of June also. So again, when you look at, you know, where are we going? What are we trying to accomplish with all this work that we're doing and all the input that we're getting from everyone? We want to make sure that we have adequate facilities, right? That's the ultimate goal. And that's what we're hearing from everybody and we truly appreciate the input that we're getting. We want to make sure that we have relevant working, learning spaces for our kiddos, right? We want to improve the conditions that they're currently having to deal with. It's all about the investment the taxpayers make. We need to be good stewards of the money that they're spending to help us upgrade our facilities. It's about debt and fact management, so we have to always pay attention to that as well. We want to operate efficiently and we want to make sure that when we put together a bond, that we have the facts and the data to support what we're bringing to you, which we didn't have before. We had some of it, but not nearly as much detailed information as we felt like we needed. So that's, that's the work that we're currently doing.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Keaton. She's so shy. Okay. So we're going to just talk real quickly about some elementary school needs because I think with what Ms. Keaton just shared with you as far as developing and working towards a master plan and prioritizing, we're still missing a little bit of information to complete these plans. But we did want to share a little bit of information based on the comprehensive questionnaire that our campus principals had to fill out for their input for needs assessments. So first I'll just, we've seen this slide in previous meetings just about the capacities. So this is just a reminder slide of the internal assessment we did on campus capacities that is just highlighting, highlighting our elementary schools. And you could see that the ones in red are over and the one that's highlighted in yellow is close to the capacity at 90%. So just a reminder of our capacity needs here. And then this is small, but you do have it in front of you. This is kind of a summary of overall information of elementary school requests and needs based on this particular questionnaire that our principals filled out. And it was pretty comprehensive and very lengthy. So if you're our principal here, thank you so much for doing that by the deadline. We truly appreciate it. But you can see that there are some similar things that are rising up, that are needs for our elementary campuses. And if you do take a look at the description and this list, a lot of these things do align to some of the priorities that we had already identified with our last Growth and Planning Committee. And so we wanted to just make sure that you had a little bit of the information on our elementary school campuses. But once all of these assessments become available, that data, we'll be able to provide you a comprehensive look that aligns with our internal, external, and what our principals are observing on their campus. And you will probably see that what the principal says is a need, what a stakeholder or teacher says is a need, will likely align to our internal and external assessments, which will help us to better prioritize when we start to build our bond packages. And also to maybe identify some things that we can address immediately. Okay. That's the last slide. I know we're a little bit over, but I think it was worth, worth the time. I just want to reiterate again that the work that you are doing and the input that you're having is truly, truly important in getting us to where we need to be. I also want to thank again our board members and I also want to apologize that I did not congratulate them on their new officer positions. Ms. Jennifer Rodriguez is our new board president. Congratulations, Ms. Rodriguez. And our new board vice president, Ms. And our new board vice president, Mr. Rafa Diaz, back here with his awesome kiddos cheering him on in the background. I appreciate your support. Mr. Salinas, a former board member, always appreciate you coming to all of our meetings. But really, a just a huge shout of appreciation to you that come every meeting and really put the work in to make sure that we're making sound decisions for the future of our district. We appreciate you very much. Thank you for being here. Please drive safe going home. And take some cookies and/or sandwiches.